Evening, everyone. It's rise to the pledge of allegiance, please.
By the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. She's a republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a roll call, please.
Mr. Dixon.
Here.
Mrs. Diglio. Mrs. LaFois.
Here.
Mrs. Tease.
Here.
Mayor Kuss.
Here. In accordance to the Open Public Meetings Act, notice of this regular meeting was provided to the two newspapers of record and posted on the official bulletin board on January 5th, 2024. And now entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the September 22nd, 2024 regular meeting.
I'll offer the minutes of regular for the regular meeting on September 23rd, 2024. And I will second.
Any changes or discussion? Okay, roll call.
Mr. Dixon.
Yes.
Mrs. Diglio.
Abstained.
Mrs. LaFois.
Yes.
Mrs. Tease.
Yes.
Mayor Kuss.
Yes. At this point in the meeting, the town council welcomes comments from any member of the public on any topic. To help facilitate this discussion and to permit the opportunity for everyone who wishes to be heard, speakers are asked to take one turn at the microphone and please limit their comments to three minutes. The clerk will keep time. If reading from a prepared statement, please email a copy to the clerk's office and provide a statement so your comments may be properly reflected in the minutes. Council may choose to comment at the end of the entire section. Please identify yourself and spell your last name for the record. As his customary, we'll begin with anyone in person. Please step forward to the microphone. Anyone would like.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, great. My name's Helen Humbert. My last name is spelled H U M B E R T. I'm a Newton resident. I've been here for a couple of years. My kids go to the school.
What is it in school? What's your name? Say your names on the record.
Okay, great. So I'm here tonight because we have a student in the high school. His name is Shray Patel. He has been diagnosed with cancer since February 2024. So he has osteosarcoma. He's been in the hospital for like three or so months. I'm putting together, I organized with the high school, I teach yoga. So I'm put together a fundraiser class for him at the high school on November 23rd at 10:00 a.m. So hopefully we can fill that gym. And I brought a flyer. So hopefully if you could blast it on your social media or however we can get the word out to help him. Yeah, any questions? It's for all ages. Everyone can come because we're, yeah, we're here for the yoga, but we're not really here for the yoga. We're here for Shray to support our Newton Brave, right? The Braves.
If you'd like to provide them.
It's yoga for Shray.
Yeah, yoga for Shray. Yeah. So Newton Public School, the high school reshared the Instagram and Facebook posts that I posted from my business. And he's going to, Principal Deeb is going to blast that out on their social media and through their forums tomorrow. Halsted Middle School is going to do the same. And I just went to Miriam to pick up my son. And I dropped off the flag for them today. So all the schools have been informed and it's not just limited to people from school, right? It's the community. Anybody who wants to come can come and support.
Helen, you mentioned it was November 23rd. What time and location?
10:00 a.m. And it's at Newton High School in their gym, which is getting redone. So it will be ready for us for this event that day. So that'll be great. Yeah.
And will you be able to register online?
So, yeah, there's a QR code here. It's a signup genius and there's also a Facebook event that Newton High School created. So they've got that and we have the signup genius just so we can get a head count. It's possible if we get a lot of people coming, which that's the hope, that I'll split it into two sessions. Maybe one at 10 and a break for a bit and come back at 11. They said that they reserved the whole day for us for this. So hope we can fill the gym maybe twice. That would be cool. But definitely once, hopefully. Yeah. Any other questions?
No, we'd love the flyers.
I have more, but thank you so much.
Thank you.
Pass them down. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll take a picture.
Good evening. My name is Walter Thies, T H I E S one Trinity Street. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Mr. Manager, Council. I am so happy to see the sidewalk on what I believe is the west side of Water Street. I've been waiting for that for a little while. I can't wait to walk on it. And really what I can't wait to see is all of the people who walked up and down Lotters Street will have a decent way to get where they're going. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who'd like to speak, please step forward. Anyone on Zoom like to offer comment, please indicate so by raising your hand. All right, not seeing anyone, we will close the first public session this evening. Move on to council and manager reports, beginning with Town Manager Russo.
Thanks, Mayor. We have a few, we have one raised hand online. That just popped up.
Hello, can you hear me? Hello? Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Sorry. I was having some technical issues here. Peggy Baldini, B A L D I N I. I had a couple of questions regarding a few of the things on the agenda today. There was an additional $100,000 for an HVAC system for the municipal building. And I thought there was an $85,000 one already. So I'm wondering if that in addition to that $85,000. And I also had a question. It looks like you are selling a car to the county for $2,000. And I was wondering what the process was for that. Because I think that year of car might be worth a little bit more than $2,000. And was that offered to the public at all or is it damaged in some way? Why would it just be $2,000? So that's all I have. Sorry. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on Zoom who'd like to speak, please indicate so by raising your hand. All right, Town Manager Russo, anyway.
Yeah, Mayor, we have three proclamations for you to either read and or note for the record, and then I'll go into my report.
All right. So the first is a proclamation for Dyslexia Awareness Month. Whereas dyslexia is a language-based learning ability that causes difficulties with reading, writing, spelling, and word pronunciation. And whereas the onset and severity of dyslexia varies for each individual. Whereas because it takes individuals with dyslexia longer to process phonemic information, the disability directly affects academic growth, achievement, and self-esteem. And whereas it is important to provide effective teaching, I'm sorry, effective teaching approaches and related clinical educational intervention strategies for individuals with dyslexia. Whereas Dyslexia Awareness Month is an opportunity to acknowledge educators specializing in effective teaching strategies and to celebrate the many achievements of adolescents, students, and adults with dyslexia. Now therefore be resolved that the town council of the town of Newton does hereby proclaim the month of October 2024 to be Dyslexia Awareness Month in the town of Newton. The second proclamation also recognizes October 24th as Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Whereas breast cancer is a serious health threat to individuals across Sussex County, the state of New Jersey, and our nation. And whereas breast cancer is the second leading cause of cancer death in women and the risk increases with age. And whereas breast cancer is typically detected either during a screening examination before symptoms have developed or after symptoms have developed when an individual notices a change in their breasts. And whereas screening early detection and prompt treatment can significantly reduce the suffering and deaths caused by this disease. And whereas increasing public awareness of this disease, including risk factors and symptoms, will help save the lives of individuals as they learn to recognize warning signs. And whereas Sussex County Division of Health, Sussex Warren Chronic Disease Coalition, and the New Jersey Cancer Education and Early Detection Program collaboratively promote National Breast Cancer Awareness Month and Susan G. Coman's Tire Ribbon Campaign throughout the month of October. Now therefore, we, the mayor and town council of the town of Newton hereby proclaim October 24th as National Breast Cancer Awareness Month and urge all residents to recognize the impact of breast cancer in our community. The third proclamation also recognizes October 24th as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Whereas domestic violence impacts our families, homes, communities, schools, institutions, and workplaces on a daily basis. And whereas domestic violence does not discriminate and touches all communities regardless of age, race, disability, gender identity, sexual orientation, culture, religion, or socioeconomic status. And whereas without intervention, cycles of violence perpetuate through generations. And whereas domestic violence prevention is the best form of victim services. And just as public health systematic approaches have helped mitigate a range of threats once thought to be intractable, they can also help to prevent domestic violence. And whereas research shows creating communities where people are connected, supportive, and care for one another can reduce incidence of domestic violence. Now therefore, we, the mayor and town council of the town of Newton hereby proclaim October 2024 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month and urge all residents to recognize the impact of domestic violence in our community.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
A couple items, one from Public Works. From Deb Danielson. Just wanted to let the public know we're now accepting hardcover and softcover books at the recycling center. There are three collection bins located on the side of the electronics trailer. The collected items will be distributed to bookstores and donated to Hasbro toys to be transformed into game boards. In about two weeks, we will also start accepting tattered and worn flags for honorable retirement. We have purchased two exterior military-style kiosks partnering with the Newton VFW. The two kiosks will be located at the recycling center and another outside of the VFW. Currently, the VFW only has an interior collection bin not accessible to the public. Around Veterans Day, we are planning our first honorable retirement ceremony. This event will feature VFW members, local Cub and Boy Scouts, local dignitaries, and invited town council. Location and date of the ceremony to be determined. I wanted to just say thank you to everyone who attended the Fall Festival and Car Show and special thanks to Kimberly Tamarin, DPW, and all the staff that volunteered and helped within countless hours to make it successful. Congratulations to all the Sussex County EDP nominees. The luncheon is this Friday. And answers to Peggy's inquiry, the HVAC came in over 400,000. That's why we have to do the supplemental for the 100,000 to make sure we can cover the bid award. And the car's estimated book value is 2,000 and the college had expressed an interest in the vehicle, which is why we're selling it directly to the county rather than going through the auction process. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Dixon.
That's it at this time for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Diglio.
Okay, not too many comments. I too want to reiterate the fact that the Fall Festival this Sunday was a wonderful event. And I want to thank Kimberly, DPW, the police, and all those that were involved in making it such a great event. And we mind the public that on 11/30 is the holiday parade. And the chamber is now looking for applications for people who wish to participate in the holiday parade.
Okay. Is it?
That's it.
Okay. Councilmember Tease.
So Tom did steal some of my thunder for some of the things I was going to comment on tonight. But to pay him back, I may sign up for the yoga. I'm not available that day, but I might relinquish my donation to the town manager. If you promise to take some pictures of yoga.
Moving downward facing dog.
Thank you. But I would like to congratulate the Newton Fire Department on the arrival of their new fire truck, which is a 2024 Ferrero Inferno HD 77 Aerial. Whoever used to watch that show, but I feel like I needed to do that. So the truck is designed to operate as a ladder truck and an engine. And this replaces a 2002 truck that we had. And we wish the fire department, you know, good luck with their new fire truck and also thank them for their service. The truck arrived on Monday night. And while at the firehouse to welcome the new truck, they had three fire calls while we were, while we were there. So they are a busy department. Also, I attended the school board meeting last evening. And so, Tom, there's a couple of things that probably Dr. Piccirilla will speak with you on Friday when you have your quarterly meeting. But one of the things the high school did this year was, or actually all the Newton schools did, they did brave initiatives where the teachers submitted ideas. And so they selected three of the ideas, one for the high school, middle school, and the grammar school. And so last night we were given a presentation by the high school. And it was, the teacher was, I'm sorry, I don't remember her name. Ms. Campana. And they did a nature trail up at the high school. And it's kind of a valuable lesson. And she showed pictures of the different spots and what the different numbered areas mean. And it's, I think it's going to be really cool because it, I learned a lot of stuff. And I think as it grows and gets bigger and more attention and stuff, that it's going to be a great learning tool for students and it's more on hand. And then the project that was selected for the Miriam Avenue School is a board that helps nonverbal students communicate. And so this is a sort of a diagram or a picture. I'm a show me person of what that will, the board will look like and I'll share it. But the, the school did ask if it was possible if we, the town of Newton, could possibly buy two of the signs and put one at Memory Park and one at Pine Street Park. And Tom, I can give you a copy of the initiative and a copy of the estimate for the location of where the signs are being made. And I, oh, and the other good news from the school was that a student at the Halsted Middle School won a national contest for his design of a Veterans Day pin. And I thought maybe it would be a nice addition to the Flags of Honor Ceremony. If maybe we could present him with a proclamation or some kind of recognition. And I couldn't get a copy of it last night, but Dr. Piccirilla does have a picture of what the pin, you know, what, what the design was. And I think that is all that I have at this time. So thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor LaFois.
Yes, I would also like to send my thanks and congratulations to the Newton Fire Department on their truck. I can't wait to see it. We're calling, I think, Ladder Two, right, Michelle? Yes. And I, many moons ago, I was part of the construction team for Ladder One. So I'm excited to see Ladder Junior. But I also want to thank Michelle for your service over the last couple of years on the Fire Truck Committee, working with the Fire Department. I know firsthand that that's a lot of meetings, a lot of hours, a lot of technical stuff. And I don't know if they made you go up 95 feet in the air or if that was just something they made me do, but very uncomfortable. So I know that you spent a lot of time out on site looking at trucks. So thank you for that service. And I just want to echo, the Fall Festival on Sunday was beautiful. So whoever was responsible for the weather, thank you very much. It was a great day. In addition to, you know, all the thank yous, you know, for Kimberly Williams and the Chamber and DPW, the Police Department. I just want to thank all the vendors that were present that came out and set up their displays and all the items that they had out to sell. And certainly everybody who attended. The festival is only as great as the people that are there, both working at the tables, at the vendor stations, and then all of our citizens that are coming out. I heard lots of compliments on the band. And the car show, so all the participants, it really just makes our community that much more vibrant. I saw a lot of people taking pictures down at the mural, which was fantastic to see as well. And then also people going into the stores. So thank you to the businesses that were open and participating in the Fall Festival. The mayor and I have a planning board meeting on October 23rd. Just want to let everyone know that the annual Fire Department and Moose Lodge Halloween Parade is on Halloween and also a trunk-or-treat. So anybody interested in decorating their trunk, their trunk and coming out, everything is going to be in the parking lot right across the street. We do a parade. Oftentimes, I'm looking down at Matt to see if he's looking. Oftentimes we utilize the services of Councilwoman Dixon to help us corral all the different parade entree groups. But I was talking to Ms. Lily before the meeting and it sounds like she's got a really cute candy corn costume. So I'm looking forward to seeing all the costumes out on Halloween. So please join us. I, on September 27th, I attended the New Jersey Planning Officials Annual Awards Ceremony. And I was really excited to attend along with our town planner, Jessica Caldwell. At the event down in Edison, the town of Newton was recognized for an achievement in planning award for our downtown beautification plan. So Tom, I'm going to pass this down to you and read, "The town of Newton used its first in the neighborhood preservation program first grant to create an implementation plan for the next five years of the program. The planned designs of facade and sign improvement program installed planters and plants and purchased a sound system for Spring Street. The final products for the year will include seasonal window improvements to vacant storefronts and the completion of facade improvements and sign improvements. Overall, this has been a strong start to Newton's Neighborhood Preservation Program implementation. One of the most important steps taken during this critical first quarter was creating connections between various town center district stakeholders and adding civic value to the district. The visible improvements of the planters and the window murals along Spring Street have added value to the district and promoted a sense of place in the town center. And at the event, there were a lot of great comments. There was a picture of our mural and a few other things. And so the recognition is great. And I want to thank Jessica for the nomination. But I think what's also wonderful is to remind everyone who's here tonight, online, et cetera, that all of these projects, the mural, the projects that I had to mention with the planters, the sound system, all these great added enhancements to our downtown have all been because of this grant. So thank you for applying for the grant. It's a multi-year grant. We already have plans for the next spend down on that, which I'm sure Tom will continue to inform everybody on. But it's great to see all of that come to our downtown, especially grant funded, and to get recognition for that. And then finally, I just did want to draw attention, is this my final note? It is. I just want to draw a little bit more attention to the proclamation that the mayor read with regards to Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Many of you might know that for the last 15 years, I've spent my career working for one of the largest domestic violence agencies in the state of New Jersey. And I will tell you firsthand, Michelle and I are both wearing purple tonight. That's the color of domestic violence awareness. Actually, Matt might have some purple on his guy as well. And I can tell you firsthand, personal experience that this issue, as the proclamation says, is prevalent in every single community. And, you know, the statistics continue to be the same. One in four women, one in seven men, and one in three teens at some point is going to be in an unhealthy domestic violence relationship in their life. Those are staggering numbers. If you just look at the number of people that are in this room, I can guarantee that many of us probably know someone or know someone very close to us in our family or have been, you know, part of an unhealthy relationship. And so thank you, Tom, and the team for continuing to recognize October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, helping us spread the word. And, you know, Daisy is a local resource here in Sussex County. They do a really excellent job. They have their shelter, their transitional living program. They do court accompaniment, of course, counseling. They're also the Sexual Assault Agency for Sussex County. We're only a hotline number away. I work in Morris County, but national helpline for JBWS, it's 1-877-AreYouAbused? And we have people that work the helplines 24/7 to make referrals or provide services. So thanks, Tom, and Mayor for the proclamation and for the continued recognition, the recognition of the important cause. And that's all.
Thank you. The only thing I'll add tonight is maybe a little recognition of one of our fellow council members. 14 days earlier in this month.
Was it 14, 16?
16 days. For a period of over two weeks, Councilmember Dixon, as part of Atlantic Mobile Health, a subcontractor of FEMA, spent a little more than two weeks down in McDowell County in North Carolina, providing medical aid EMS in the devastated region of North Carolina as a result of Hurricane Helene. And I'm sure that you have more stories than you'd like to reveal, but just want to thank Councilmember Dixon for his time down there and recognize that, you know, as a country, you know, when natural disasters happen, we do bind together. And one of our own was able to go down and provide some service. So thank you very much, Matt. Thank you. Now move to resolution this evening. Yes.
Can I ask, Resolution 257, 2024 relates to ordinance 2024-29. I'd ask for the council to consider the resolution as part of that ordinance. And I'll explain it at the time.
And as such, would you like us to act on this now or wait until?
Wait till, wait till you get to the ordinance.
Very well.
Thank you.
You're welcome. As such, we will then move to the second reading and public hearing of Ordinance 2024-26, which is an ordinance providing funding for the acquisition of a fire truck for the town of Newton and appropriating $10,500 for such purpose. I'll now open the hearing to the public. If anyone in the public would like to speak on this matter, please step forward or raise your hand on Zoom. Not seeing anyone, we'll close the hearing to the public and I'll entertain a motion to act on ordinance 2024-26.
I'll offer ordinance 2024-26.
I will second that ordinance.
Any discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Dixon.
Yes.
Mrs. Diglio.
Yes.
Mrs. LaFois.
Yes.
Mrs. Tease.
Yes.
Mayor Kuss.
Yes. Now move to ordinance 2024-27, which is an ordinance providing funding for renovations to Firehouse Number One for the town of Newton and appropriating $32,500 for such purpose. I'll now open the hearing to the public. If any member of the public would like to speak on this matter, please step forward or raise your hand on Zoom. Not seeing anyone, we'll close the hearing to the public and I'll entertain a motion to act on ordinance 2024-27.
I will make a motion to act on ordinance 2024-27.
And I will second.
Any discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Dixon.
Yes.
Mrs. Diglio.
Yes.
Mrs. LaFois.
Yes.
Mrs. Tease.
Yes.
Mayor Kuss.
Yes.
Mayor, I have a hand raised. I'm not sure if it's in reference to this ordinance from Dr. McCosh.
Well, the ordinance was already acted on, so we'll move to the next one. Ordinance 2024-28, an ordinance concerning low-speed electric scooters, low-speed electric bicycles, and motorized electric bicycles, and amending, revising, and supplementing the code of the town of Newton by adding a new section 307-17.4 to Chapter 307 of said code entitled e-bikes. three zero seven dash seventeen point four to chapter three zero seven of said code entitled e-bikes and e-scooters. Now open the hearing to the public. If any member of the public would like to speak on this matter, please indicate so by stepping forward or raising your hand. Do you have a hand raised on Zoom, I believe?
Hello? Hello? Hello?
Yes, hello.
Okay, do you hear me? Okay, I'm sorry, I uh, okay, Lord Miller, my gosh. Uh, as a matter of fact, I did raise my hand for the ordinance um twenty-four, uh twenty twenty-four, twenty-seven, and I don't know, you didn't see that. So I'm sorry, I have question in regards to that. Is any way that you can give me answer if I ask for that?
Mr. Bruce?
You take you, whether ask the question and the council can answer it later this evening or another time.
Okay, you may proceed.
Uh, so can I ask the question? It is, it is in regard to this ordinance. I'd like to know the type of the renovation you are going to do there. What's happening there?
Yes, um, a more comprehensive answer uh may be provided um in the minutes of one of our past meeting. Um, I just bear with me for a moment to pull up the date unless someone has it immediately. Uh, we may provide it a little later in the meeting. Um, but there was uh at one of our meetings earlier in the spring, maybe. Um, there was a large presentation that was done regarding the comprehensive renovation to uh Newton Fire Station Number One um over on Mill Street. So a, a short answer is not immediately going to be available. Um.
I can answer that.
Or unless you have an answer yet.
Yeah, no, the answer is the furniture and equipment, tables, chairs, it's a professional refrigerator, television. So there's only appurtenances that go with the firehouse that we have to provide additional funding for, so we can order that type of equipment and furniture for the building.
Understood. Dr. Makaj, I apologize. Uh, was your question in regards to the additional expense that's being appropriated or just the overall construction project?
This is the new firehouse that uh was done? I, I, I'm trying to, to picture where is this in Mills?
Firehouse Number One.
On Mill Street.
In Mill Street, so not the other one. Okay.
Correct.
We'll get a little more information maybe from the town manager. I'd like a meeting with him since I'm running this year.
I, I already answered this at a previous meeting. It's for furniture and equipment related to, to the firehouse.
Uh, as you see, I'm, I'm, I, I'm trying to be Wednesday. I am at my work and I'm trying hard to, to participate here. Okay.
So Dr. Makaj, we'll follow up um with that presentation that was provided.
Meeting with the town manager because I need also to know about the projects in the town.
Okay, if you, if you want to reach, reach out with him offline, um, you, you can send him uh an email if you'd like. T. Russo, T. Russo at NewtonTownHall.com. Thank you. We'll now move to ordinance twenty twenty-four dash, I'm sorry, did we complete twenty-eight?
I'll offer ordinance twenty twenty-four dash twenty-eight.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mrs. Diglio?
Yes.
Mrs. LeFois?
Yes.
Mrs. Teets?
Yes.
Mayor Kousse?
Yes.
Mayor, before you read ordinance twenty twenty-four dash twenty-nine, let me explain why I asked for slight deviation in life. The uh, the governing body at the September twenty-third, twenty twenty-four meeting introduced the ordinance. It was sent to DEP and needless to say, what a shock, the state couldn't not tinker with it. Um, the resolution two fifty-seven, twenty twenty-four, after a review by my office, we determined this is not such substantive changes which would have required the reintroduction of the ordinance, et cetera. So what I'll ask the governing bodies to do after the mayor reads the ordinance is to open the hearing for the ordinance. Then introduce and second the resolution. Have a second hearing on the resolution and then adopt the ordinance as amended. There'll be a short quiz.
Got it.
So I apologize for the imaginations, but that's the requirements.
All right. So ordinance twenty twenty-four dash twenty-nine is an ordinance by the mayor and town council amending the Town of Newton Code to repeal chapter one two zero flood damage prevention, to adopt a new chapter, one two zero flood damage prevention, to adopt flood hazard maps, to designate a floodplain administrator, and to provide for severability in an effective date. I'll now open the hearing to the public. If anyone in the public would like to speak on this matter, please step forward or raise your hand.
One on one?
Yes.
Hey, I, again, I'd like to make sure that I am in the right ordinance.
Uh, we are looking at ordinance twenty twenty-four dash twenty-nine, flood damage prevention.
Oh, okay, no, oh, I am for the thirty, so you can pass. I'm sorry. I was looking at the thirty.
Okay. Okay. There is a, yeah.
Hi, Peggy Baldini again, B.A.L.D.I.N.I. Um, I had a question. Did we have these in place earlier? And they're changing them or this is just a brand new thing that they're bringing in uh to designate these floodplanes? Uh, and do you think that might affect our homeowner's insurance and things like that? Uh, I don't know if anybody's discussed that before because I missed a couple of meetings. Sorry about that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, member of the governing body, this ordinance has been in place before. The state determined within the last year that it wanted all the regulations for floodplain administration, et cetera, changed. And therefore, all municipalities Newton amongst were required to reintroduce their floodplain ordinance to make amendments to designate a floodplain administrator officially. We have had one and to take additional actions regarding it. So this is an update that is being mandated on all of you and five hundred and sixty-four other municipalities in the state of New Jersey um through this ordinance.
Thank you.
And it should not impact homeowner's insurance any more than it's already impacting homeowner's insurance.
Thank you.
Seeing no other comments, as per council's request, I'll offer resolution two fifty-seven, twenty twenty-four.
I'll second.
Any discussion on that resolution?
No discussion. Now, now you need another hearing on the resolution only.
Okay. Now open a public hearing for resolution twenty I'm sorry, two five seven dash two zero two four.
Yeah.
If anyone would like to speak on this matter, please indicate so by raising your hand or stepping forward. Not seeing anyone, we'll close the hearing for resolution two five seven dash twenty twenty-four.
The motion second council members is a motion to adopt twenty twenty-four dash twenty-nine as amended by resolution two fifty-seven dash twenty twenty-four.
Now entertain said motion.
I will offer resolution point, ordinance twenty twenty-four dash twenty-nine, which then adopts resolution two fifty-seven dash twenty twenty-four.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mrs. Diglio?
Yes.
Mrs. LeFois?
Yes.
Mrs. Teets?
Yes.
Mayor Kousse?
Yes.
Thank you all for your indulgence in this.
Thank you. Now move to ordinance twenty twenty-four dash thirty, which is a bond ordinance providing a supplemental appropriation of one hundred thousand dollars for the installation of an HVAC system at Town Hall in and by the Town of Newton in the county of Sussex, New Jersey, and authorizing the issuance of ninety-five thousand dollars worth of bonds or notes of the town for financing part of the appropriation. Well, now open the hearing to the public. If anyone would like to speak on this matter, please indicate so by stepping forward or raising your hand on Zoom.
I had the memo.
Yes, hi, um. In the, in June twenty, I think it was June twenty-four when was the meeting and I remember that uh you were talking about eighty-eight thousand dollars. So it seems to me, and uh again, I, I was not in the first part of this meeting because I am at my work. Um, I see another one hundred and another ninety-five. Uh, something doesn't click right to me. Thinking about that on that meeting, I was very straightforward to really doing your homework and calculation and beatings and managing this town in a very frugal way. I would like to know why you have more expenses here. And um, I'm not too sure what was said before, but based in one of the information of my hands, I'd like to know if it's true or maybe I misunderstood. How much is going to cost us all this HVAC altogether? It started with eighty-eight, now it's hundred and another, another ninety-five. Is that true that maybe it's four hundred thousand dollar? I'd like to know that. And uh, are you guys doing any beating? Or hiring another company where you can get the better, the better deal out there? Because what I'm seeing here, no matter what, things are going up. And since you know that I'm running for Newton Town Council, constantly now that I'm meeting with people, their concern it is you are going above the budget. All your projects looks like it's going above the budget. So I'd like a little bit to understand how do you proceed? Why this number are going so high? Thank you.
Thank you. Any other one else in the public? Okay, we'll close the hearing to the public. Mr. Russo, are you able to provide any commentary on this specific?
Yeah, the bids came in higher than originally estimated, so this is a supplemental so that we can do the project. There's no need to discuss with other contractors because we already went out for bidding.
And the original quote of eighty-eight thousand dollars has been?
The original estimate was four hundred and came in at four eighty-five, so this covers any section twenty costs and the additional eighty-five thousand.
And at present, there is no alternative. This is the, how the bidding process worked. Air quality standards require us to replace the HVAC system because of the excessive heat that was experienced exceeding the air quality standard. There, uh, would you, uh, is it fair to say that there is not an alternative at the moment?
Not if we want employees and visitors to come to the municipal building, no.
Okay. So in order to keep the building operational, as required by the air quality standard, it seems as if this is the direction that the town must engage in, must take.
Required by OSHA.
Is, yeah, it's required by the uh public employee occupational safe and healthy standards in the state of New Jersey. Um, office buildings must remain within sixty-eight to seventy-nine degrees. Otherwise, it does fall back on the employer to uh address the uh problem with the HVAC system, which we are doing by replacing it, and this is how the bids came. I will entertain a motion to approve ordinance, I'm sorry, yeah, ordinance twenty twenty-four dash thirty.
I will offer or uh ordinance twenty twenty-four dash thirty.
And I will second ordinance twenty twenty-four dash thirty.
Any discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mrs. Diglio?
Yes.
Mrs. LeFois?
Yes.
Mrs. Teets?
Yes.
Mayor Kousse?
Yes. Now move to ordinance twenty twenty-four dash thirty-one, which is an introduction. This is an ordinance authorizing the sale of a two thousand twelve Ford Explorer, no longer needed for public use to Sussex County Community College. I'll entertain a motion to introduce ordinance twenty twenty-four dash thirty-one.
I will make the motion to introduce ordinance twenty twenty-four dash thirty-one.
I'll second.
Roll call?
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mrs. Diglio?
Yes.
Mrs. LeFois?
Yes.
Mrs. Teets?
Yes.
Mayor Kousse?
Yes. The public hearing for this ordinance will be Wednesday, November thirteenth at seven P.M. We'll now move to a second ordinance for introduction. This is ordinance twenty twenty-four dash thirty-two, which is an ordinance to amend, revise, and supplement chapter three zero seven of Newton Town Code entitled Vehicles and Traffic, most notably section three zero seven dash forty-four point one entitled Crosswalks by adding a new mid-block crosswalk across Diller Avenue in the Town of Newton. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty-four dash thirty-two.
I'll make a motion to introduce ordinance twenty twenty-four dash thirty-two.
And I'll second.
Roll call?
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mrs. Diglio?
Yes.
Mrs. LeFois?
Yes.
Mrs. Teets?
Yes.
Mayor Kousse?
Yes. Public hearing will also be Wednesday, November thirteenth at seven P.M. We'll now move to the consent agenda. The consent agenda uh has a list of items which are listed within asterisk. They are considered to be routine and non-controversial by the town council and will be approved by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests, in which case the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Mr. Russo, if you would not mind, a rundown, please.
Sure, two forty-seven is a refund for two oh five Main Street, two forty-eight is support of the issuance of a cannabis class five retailer license to Bud City, New Jersey LLC. Tom Ferry will address two forty-nine and two fifty, two fifty-one is fireworks display at Newton Medical. Two fifty-two is the amendment to the capital budget for Firehouse One and acquisition of the fire truck. Two fifty-three is similar amendment to the capital budget for HVAC. Two fifty-four amends the suburban consulting engineer contract for Mooresbrook dredging. Two fifty-five is an award of a contract for an SMJ fencing, which is for the roller hockey, and two fifty-six is bills and vouchers. Tommy, you want to address two four nine, two five zero?
So as a requirement, um, we discussed this in September eleventh meeting. Uh, Fred was here, I'm pretty sure, and uh there were amendments to the um chemical room. Um, so that there was extra engineering. So there were two um resolutions. And as part, uh, for part of this grant, um, I bank required Fred and us to um award in a contract, in essence. Um, so when I looked at the contract, uh, there were two separate parts to it. One was a um field and one was an office um portion. I only picked up when I did, when I submitted the resolution on September eleventh, I only submitted the um office, uh, the office part. I didn't pick up on the other part. Um, so we're basically amending those two resolutions uh, two thirty twenty-four and two twenty-nine dash twenty-four to include the other parts of the resul, of the contract.
Question. So the amounts being asked in the two forty-nine and the two fifty are in addition to the amounts that have already been approved?
Yes, no, uh, no, not in addition. It's, I just picked up the incorrect amount. So this result, so let's hypothetically, two thirty dash twenty-four, I had it twenty-five thousand dollars and the actual amount was forty-seven because I missed um the additional parts. He had it in two separate portions and I just missed the total to put in the resolution. So he's not asking for any more money than previously. It's just when I did the resolution, I gave the wrong dollar amount.
Any other questions for Mr. Perry? Uh, is there any item that anyone would like to remove from the consent agenda? Um, remove two fifty-one for a separate vote? Otherwise, I'll entertain, well, entertain a motion to uh approve resolution two five one dash twenty twenty-four.
I'll offer the consent agenda as presented.
Uh, looking for two fifty-one.
Oh, you want two fifty-one separately, but it's all first. I'll offer resolution two fifty-one dash twenty twenty-four.
Okay, is there a second?
I will second.
All right. No discussion needed. Alright, no discussion needed. Uh, I believe, uh, Councilman Dixon and I just need to abstain separately on this resolution. Uh, any other discussion? Okay. Uh, roll call for two fifty one?
Mister Dixon?
Abstain.
Mrs. Diglio?
Yes.
Mrs. LaFois?
Yes.
Mrs. Teats?
Yes.
Mayor Kus?
Yes.
Stay.
Oh, I'm sorry, abstain.
Change your mind though.
Sorry, uh, yes, I have stayed on it. Thank you very much.
Motion carried.
Now entertain a motion to uh, approve the consent agenda.
Now I will offer the consent agenda as presented minus resolution two fifty one dash twenty twenty four.
I'll second.
Uh, any discussion? Roll call?
Mister Dixon?
Yes.
Mrs. Diglio?
Yes, and no to resolution two forty nine and two fifty.
Wait, so they would have pulled that out? So they would have to be pulled separately?
Oh, okay.
So I'll offer the consent agenda as presented without resolutions two forty eight dash twenty twenty four, two forty nine dash twenty twenty four. And two fifty one dash twenty twenty four.
Okay, now two forty nine and two fifty.
No, just two forty nine and two fifty, you already voted off.
Right, two forty nine, well, already said two.
Now you're pulling two forty nine and two fifty, resolution consent agenda. The two forty seven, two forty eight, two fifty two, two fifty three, two fifty four, five and six.
Is there a second for that motion?
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion? Alright, roll call?
Mister Dixon?
Yes.
Mrs. Diglio?
Yes.
Mrs. LaFois?
Yes.
Mrs. Teats?
Yes.
Mayor Kus?
Uh, an extension on, uh, check eleven, seven forty two, yes, otherwise. Will now entertain a motion to approve resolution two forty nine dash twenty twenty four?
I will offer a resolution two forty nine dash twenty twenty four.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Roll call?
Mister Dixon?
Yes.
Mrs. Diglio?
No.
Mrs. LaFois?
Yes.
Mrs. Teats?
Yes.
Mayor Kus?
Yes. Now entertain a motion to approve resolution two five zero dash twenty twenty four?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution two five zero dash twenty four.
And I will second.
Any discussion? Roll call?
Mister Dixon?
Yes.
Mrs. Diglio?
No.
Mrs. LaFois?
Yes.
Mrs. Teats?
Yes.
Mayor Kus?
Yes. Now move to the second open to the public session this evening. Uh, any member of the public is welcome to speak on any topic. We're limited to three minutes. The clerk will keep time. Uh, if anyone in a person would like to speak, feel free to step up to the microphone. If anyone on Zoom would like to speak, please indicate so by raising your hand. As is customary, we'll again begin with anyone in person who would like to speak. Not seeing anyone, we move to Zoom.
Hello?
Hello, Ben Miller.
Yes, uh. Let's go back to, because I guess I didn't get the answer. Um, at the ordinance number twenty twenty four thirty one, I did raise my hand. Maybe the manager didn't see my hand out there, so you.
No, I saw it. It was for introduction. There's no public comment during introduction.
Okay, but because I missed the open, okay, let's talk about. That, that's okay. Now I'm going to do my statement here. Uh, I didn't see any information. I'd like a little more transparency about this uh, ordinance that you are introducing for the two thousand dollar. I do believe that uh. Instead of just selling that to the county college of, uh, I mean, Sussex County Community College that already. We lost about hundred thirty thousand dollar taxpayers because um, in a wrongfully was given uh, to them. Uh, I'd like to know, uh, maybe um, you could have put that on bidding and uh. Uh, if you give a little more information to the public, you can get more money out of that than just giving to the Sussex County Community College. That's not my number one. Number two. About the ordinance, uh. Uh, I think that was, which was that thirty? I think thirty, uh, twenty four, uh, twenty twenty four thirty. It is about the HVAC. I didn't get completely the total amount that you are going to spend. I didn't hear that. Uh, I'd like to know little, I mean, again. I think. When you go, you start with the eighty five and then you go to hundred, to ninety five or four hundred or four hu- four hundred eighty five. I, I find this outrageous. If you do not to do the bidding, I find this to my eyes. Against the rules, against the law. Things should be with the bidding. You should get other inputs from the other companies. You should hire, maybe there is some uh, uh, some companies out there that they are uh, neutral. You know, that you would not be compromised out there.
One minute warning, please.
Pardon?
It's a one minute warning. I just wanted to let you know.
Okay, so basically, I think just getting one or two beatings is not enough. And. Uh, uh, maybe, okay. Uh, town manager, by the way, I'd like a meeting with you, uh, since I am a candidate and I'd like to know a little more about. Because it seems to me there is no transparency out there and people like to see a little more transparency on these things. Because in the end, it is a tax taxpayers' money. In, in, in June of twenty. Uh, twenty fourth of June this past summer. I did come to you, telling you that things are going. Extremely very high, the taxes doubled, the rate that you gave one year ago was two point four, then you ended up. Two point six seven that time, and now when I got my bill of the taxes is two point seven six seven. Really something is not quite right here. So I, I, I really, I'll uh, I'll invite all of you body governing of the Newton. Maybe you should trans some numbers out there. Because. I mean, this is out of the blue. In the beginning, I was not happy with eighty five thousand dollar for HVAC. Now.
Thank you. Um. If anyone else on Zoom would like to speak, please indicate so by raising your hand.
Hi, I'm sorry to bother you again, uh, Peggy Baldini, B A L D I N I. Um, I just, I had a couple more questions about this car and I, you know, I'm not expecting answers tonight. Because you might have to look into it. Um, but I was just wondering, uh, does the car have like high mileage or something to, to make the value that low? Um, and also, I was wondering if it was purchased on a bond. I know we like to pay for a lot of things with like a twenty year bond. So I don't know if we're still paying for this, um. And you know, it's just, it's concerning. And that's all. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Peggy. No bother at all. Anyone else on Zoom would like to speak, please indicate so by raising your hand? Alright, not seeing anyone, we'll close the second public hearing this evening. Uh, and with any final manager or council comments?
Yeah, I'll, I'll try to. Politely answer Dr. Macaj, we, we. I don't, can't believe I even have to explain this to a council candidate. So the town of Newton follows all local public contract laws. So between the qualified purchasing agent and the municipal engineer. We followed every applicable law necessary to effectuate a bid process. Whereby we went out to bid, obtained bids, had a bid opening, had all the professionals review said bids, and then we award the bid. We didn't budget enough money because the numbers came in higher, which is why we're doing a supplemental ordinance, so. With all due respect, I resent the implication. That we're not transparent and that this governing body or this staff doesn't do things correctly by the law because we do. And as far as the car, it seems like we're being chastised or criticized because we're selling a car that's old and dilapidated to the college who needs the car. If there's any information the council would like on this, I'll obtain it. But there, there's nothing inappropriate about selling this vehicle to the college. It's another government entity. They need the vehicle. It, they'll get some life out of it. We don't need it anymore. It, it's the value of the vehicle. Council can vote the ordinance up or down. But there's really nothing more exciting to it than that, so I don't know what else to tell you about those two topics, but those are the answers.
Mister Russo, to clarify, um, the. Public contracts law requires, uh, the bidding threshold rather, for, under the public contracts law is forty four thousand dollars?
Correct. If you had, that's the minimum bid threshold if you have a Q P A.
Correct.
You are obligated irrespective whether you have a Q P A or not, to award it to the lowest responsible bidder. So long as there are sufficient funds in order to avoid going out. And rebidding the process, and I will indicate to the governing body, as you all know. I represent a number of public entities throughout the state. The costs of construction are skyrocketing. And we are seeing it everywhere in every bid that we're dealing with since COVID. HVAC being one of those items. The alternative is to go back out to bid with no guarantee the number is going to be any better. In fact, it's probably going to be worse. We are obligated under the local public contracts law to award to a responsible, the lowest responsible bidder. We cannot go out and farm it out to the local HVAC people. There are qualifications necessary in order to bid. You have to meet the qualifications, you have to meet the requirements of the bid, you have to produce. Bid bonds, performance bonds, and related items. And frankly, a vast majority of those people who come to your house and fix your air conditioning and heating unit. Want no part of that, can't afford it, and can't qualify to do it. So with this item, considering the situation. Mister Canning, my office, the engineer, et cetera, Mister Russo and his staff. Have attempted to try to resolve it. With the understanding that, yes, it was more than the engineer's estimate. But probably less than we potentially could be looking for if we had to go out and rebid the project.
So to. Review the options. We took the option, or we, we were mandated to go out to bid.
You are mandated to do any construction project. To bid that exceeds forty four thousand dollars.
And the estimate for this project exceeded forty four thousand dollars, which required us to go out to bid, doubled it. We then received bids. We have identified a lowest responsible bidder as one of those parties. And looking at the alternatives at the moment, we could go out to bid and potentially receive bids. There's a reasonable risk of receiving bids that are higher. Than any of the bids we have currently received, thus making the project even more expensive. In addition to the fees involved with potentially, you know, working with the Q P A again, she, uh, are, are, uh, uh, going through council. Opening the bidding process, there'll be more costs involved, increasing the price of the overall project as it is. We're also in a position where we are mandated to make the correction to the HVAC device or to the HVAC system as a result of the. P R standard, air quality standard. Um, at this point, we do not have another option that would be cheaper. Is that a fair summary?
As in, excellently fair summary.
Excellent. Thank you. Any further comments or?
No, I just wanna thank you for going over that. Thank you, Mister Russo, Mister Bernstein for explaining that. I think that. Kinda settles this. It's very clear now. I think the residents understand. Transparent. And uh, the candidate can understand that, that speaks volumes, but thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or discussion on any other items? Okay, I believe we have a discussion on the agenda for our municipal best practices review?
Yeah, just a brief victory lap for Tom and the staff for our annual submission, so I'll let Tom. Welcome through our perfect score and then we can go more executive.
I'm not going through all sixty six or whatever, um, a lot of the questions, um. They're putting feelers out, some of, a lot of them were unscored. Um, they're just putting feelers out there how things are, shared services, things like that. Uh, but yes, we scored a forty six point five out of a forty six point five. Um. I told Tom, it's, 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 most of the questions that are there. Aren't answered by me. I basically farm them out to the H R department. To the clerk's office, to Tom's office, um. And to the tax office and to the water and sewer department. Um, into our, our, um. Computer. Uh, person. Uh, so there's a lot of questions that are very all over the place, but yes, we scored, um. A perfect score, so kudos to Tom and everybody. Why to me being here since July first, because I had nothing to do with it.
Thank you, Mister Ferry. I mean, as I recall, when this. System, scoring system, evaluation system of sorts first came down. I believe, and Tom correct me, it was sprung on all the municipalities without any warning. Nor were the criteria or the expectations by the state given to the towns prior to the first assessment. Um, and over the years, not that we've ever not have a, had a good, a good score, but over the years, um, have made. Uh, changes to policies and procedures. We've implemented processes um, to accommodate the states. I'll say recommendations for best practices. Um, and then each year, they tend to. Add some that again. Weren't discussed prior to, um, in all fairness to municipality for being evaluated on. Um, and yet we continue to perform well, so, um, having been around long enough to, to see the process. And as you've clearly outlined, it really does take effort. On behalf of the entire team and all the departments and six, there were sixty six this year. I think it was forty something the first year, so they keep adding to them. Um, and for Newton to um, attain a, a perfect score on, um. Probably ninety five percent of what we knew, right, and were able to perform to over the last year. But I would venture to say probably another five percent or five to ten percent that we were unaware was going to be rated and scored. Um, is, is a good feat in of itself. So I know, Tom, that you're presenting on behalf of the municipality. But I just wanna thank all of the departments and everybody that, that enabled us to get a perfect score, um, and perform. As the state deems our best practices, um, you know, for this rating, so I appreciate everyone's efforts.
I set the bar high for you.
And just handed out the people.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you very much. Uh, at this point, there are no other comments or discussion. Uh, there is a resolution on the agenda. Uh, resolution two twenty four dash two thousand twenty four, which has been carried from, I believe, the August. Uh, I'm sorry, September eleventh, two thousand twenty four meeting, um, for executive session. I'll enter a motion, or I'm sorry, I'll entertain a motion, uh, to enter executive session.
I will make a motion to enter into executive session. Two twenty four dash twenty twenty four.
I'll second. Uh, roll call?
Mister Dixon?
Yes.
Mrs. Diglio? Mrs. LaFois?
Yes.
Mrs. Teats?
Yes.
Mayor Kus?
Yes.